I call this meeting of the Northeast Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code Chapter 551. The Board will now adjourn into executive session pursuant to the following sections of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Texas Government Code Section 551.071, Private Consultation with the Board's Attorney, 551.072, Discussing Purchase, Exchange, Lease or Value of Real Property, 551.074, To Discuss Personnel or to Hear Complaints Against Personnel, and the time is 5:31. The Board will now reconvene into open session. The time is 6:42. Item 4, Matters from Executive Session. A, Personnel Including but Not Limited to Administrative Appointments pursuant to Government Code Section 551.074. One, Possible Action Regarding Routine Personnel Including but Not Limited to Administrative Appointments. Do I have a motion to approve this discussed in executive session?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Hasso. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Winkley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The motion carries. Item 2, Possible, or B, sorry, Item B, Possible Action Regarding Purchase, Exchange, Lease or Value of Real Property pursuant to Government Code Section 551.072. No action. C, Possible Action Regarding Consultation with Board's Attorney pursuant to Government Code Section 551.071. One, Pending Anor Possible Litigation. No action. Item 5, Presentations. A, Budget Study Session Number Three. Mr. Villarreal.
Yes, Madam President, members of the Board, Dr. Mike, executive staff and guests. Tonight, we bring you Budget Study Session Number Three. We're going to be talking about the General Fund, and we're going to be recapping it, and then we're going to talk about the School Nutrition Fund, and then the next steps for next week. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Suzy Lackhorn, our Director of Budgets.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President.
Hello.
Members of the Board, Dr. Micah, executive staff and guests, welcome to Budget Study Session Number Three. We will cover the General Fund. You'll get to see School Nutrition for the first time, and we'll talk about your next steps for the very important meeting next week. All right, so let's get started with compensation. We talked last week, showed you this slide, with the cost of the retention. So 1% will cost us 3.9 million, 2% 7.8. We're talking again about retention and not raises because Commissioner Morath has strongly encouraged districts not to add ongoing costs to their budget. But we have lots of issues, right? A lot of insignificant, unknown entities for the district this year. Some of the big questions, how many students are going to return? Will we get ADA funding for those that are going to, that we would serve with distance learning? How long will the economy be stagnant? That's going to have a big impact on the state's budget, which, given how significant education is to state funding, a big economic downturn causes them to have less revenue, which means they can pass less along to school districts. So something to be very watchful for, for our upcoming legislative session in January. Will we face a second closure? Will there be any more stimulus? These questions are all very much up in the air, and it's very difficult, as you imagine, to build a budget when your revenue picture is very murky. So, we're hopeful that we'll get some information soon from TEA. Commissioner Morath has indicated that we'll get some information in a conference call soon.
I heard today it could be lighter.
Oh.
Yes, Mr. Villarreal, it could be lighter than. If anything, I think we've learned through COVID-19, expect the unexpected sometimes. And so, we just simply don't know. So we'll have to wait until we have that guidance from TEA and the state.
Absolutely. So just even more questions. Now, we don't just have a question of what the answer's going to be, now the question is, when is the answer going to come? So importantly, that fifth penny is something you won't be able to do until later in the year. The fifth penny will bring in 7.5 million in revenue if you choose to adopt it. So again, we adopted a tax rate in September, so it's not something you can do right at this moment, or next week when we adopt the budget. Keep in mind, that 2% retention costs 7.8 million. So that fifth penny is almost the exact cost of the 2% retention. So, at this time, the safest course of action would be to wait on the decision for the retention until we have a clearer picture of our revenue. Hopefully, by the time September rolls around, I say that wink, wink, we should have answers on ADA funding. We'll also know how many students returned to the district, how many moved out, and what kind of level of service we're providing, and what kind of level of ADA funding that drives. We'll also be adopting the tax rate at that point in time, so it's a good time to make those decisions. Since we're talking about a retention, it also doesn't impact our operations. When you talk about a raise, we have to process that through the HR and the payroll systems in order to get those checks out as people come on contract in July and August and September. But the retention's paid out in two separate times after the end of each semester. So even pushing the decision back to September gives Human Resources and Payroll plenty of time to get that first batch of checks ready for the, at the end of the first semester. Okay?
And I know we've talked about this many times. The landscape is just very uncertain right now. It just is. And so, what we don't want to do is try to have a crystal ball and predict what's going to happen, because we simply don't. We just really don't know. And again, if you'll recall what I said, I think it was night one, where I just said it's kind of the wild, wild west out there. People are kind of picking what they want to go with. And so, if I'll remind you, what Chairman Huberty had said to us on a call is, think optimistic, but plan conservatively. And that's really the approach that we're taking, because I think those are good words as we're trying to figure out, how is all of this going to shake out? And then who knows what the next biennium will hold? And again, if you'll remember what Mr. Moy had said, they were very crafty in their language not to exclude proration. So they've really kept everything on the table, because they too, until, when is it, Mr. Moy, July?
July.
When the controller comes out?
Late July.
Late July. That's when we're really going to know what the state's fiscal impact has been. And so, but again, you know, we want to think optimistic. We really do. But we've got a plan for what, for what could happen.
All right, so let's take a look at the expenditure budget. So far, we've really focused in on forecasted actuals, and tonight, it's going to be a look at the big picture of the budget. And keep in mind, we budget for everything being spent. 100% staffed the whole year, every department spending every penny that they have, and that just, that never happens. And so, your budget is bigger than what we actually expect to happen, and we'll show you that comparison later on. Just a reminder, since last week, you approved the 180-day school calendar. The addition of those three days will add a few costs to the budget. We'll need additional bus driver service, aides, fuel costs for those three days, but it also allows us to capture some additional revenue. So, the 180-day calendar gives us the opportunity to participate in the Additional Days School Year Incentive, which was created by HB3. We get half-day formula funding for 30 additional days in the summer. We're still working on those plans, so the number of days and the number of participants is still unknown. So right now, I have the cost of the three extra days in the budget, but I don't have a good picture of the revenue. Once again, I don't have a good picture of revenue, right? So that part's not built into the budget. When we get a better feel for what the Summer of '21 program will look like under this incentive, if we need to, we'll come back to you with a budget amendment to add that. All right.
I think it was a little unclear. Will you please speak to the benefit for that academic gap that we anticipate seeing, and why this is so crucial to have those additional days in the school year? Not just on the monetary side, but on the academic side. I really think our, our community needs to understand that.
No, Mr. Jarrett, I'm just looking at you, because you may want to weigh in here as well. All right? So, the 180-day calendar is, was really established, this was an option established in HB3 before COVID-19 happened. What it was is really about trying to close gaps for students, because it was trying to give us more instructional time in order to intervene for students. All right? So Commissioner Morath and I had actually, Dan, if you'll recall, the day we were at Region 20, we were speaking about this. And so, what happened with COVID-19, though, is we know that the summer slide is real. Kids go home for the summer, and there's a certain amount of instructional loss. They just forget some stuff. I have two of my own, I think I've said this, they don't retain everything. In a traditional way, we catch them back up in the fall, and we move on. Well, now they've been out for, what, six months? That's going to be a lot of loss. That's what we all anticipate, especially for our youngest learners. Kinder, first, second. Ms. Winkley, I believe a young Boy Scout had emailed you about reading, right? What we know, and through research has said, is that they're really not reading at the third grade level, at the end of third grade. You really don't ever catch them up. And so, we know that we are going to have to impact students and really get in with them in a big way, because especially through COVID-19, and I think I've said this before to you all, but I'm a member of Operation Connectivity for the state. TEA, this began with Dr. Heno Hoss up in Dallas, but TEA joined, and the governor has sanctioned it as well, because what COVID-19 showed us is, not every student had internet. And maybe they had internet, but it wasn't very reliable, or it wasn't high speed. And so, to that first grade student, to that second grade student, even to that 10th grade student, if they didn't have internet, yes, did they get paper packets? Sure. But they didn't get the same experience that other students did. They didn't have the same connection to the classroom that other students did. This is well-known throughout the U.S. Is now what it's being referred to, and rightfully so in my opinion, is internet access should be seen just like water and power. It is an essential piece of what you need to function. They saw that when welfare started to happen, you had to go online. What if you don't have internet access? How do you file for it? The offices were closed. It became, it really exposed it, in a sense. And so this, you know, this summer, we're doing a re-engagement camp at the end of July for students to try to, and it's, Mr. Jarrett, it's one week or two week?
It's two weeks.
Two weeks. So it's a two-week program, it's at our Title I campuses, to try to re-engage a lot of our elementary kiddos, to get them back into the swing of school before school starts. Well, we were able to provide that free of charge this summer. We were able to do that free of charge because of some of the cost savings we had through COVID-19. We didn't have to pay for power. Buildings were closed. We were able to recoup some of those monies. So we were able to provide this re-engagement camp. Well, you've heard about all the ambiguity around budget next year. We may not be able to do that again next year for free, and we certainly don't want to pass that on to our parents if we don't have to. So this 180-day calendar option is a way to capture some funds for up to 30 days at K5, our youngest learners, and be able to provide that type of remediation to offset some of what COVID, what is referred to now as COVID slide, has done with our kids. That's what this is really about. We knew, and you know, when I took over as superintendent, we talked a lot about, you know, student outcomes. I mean, that's, the whole institution of education's about student outcomes. That's what we're here for. And so, we know, and that's not about star, that's just about learning. We have to help kids learn at a high level. We all know the impact that education has on our students. The better the education, the chances of better jobs and so forth, right? We wanted to make sure that we provide the most robust program that we can possibly afford at no cost to our parents moving forward, to make certain that we do everything within our power to catch these kids up. As I stated on my call with the Bear County delegation last week, this isn't a one-year problem, y'all. You know, my child took Algebra I this year. Well, he missed the last nine weeks of Algebra I. Now, did he miss it all? No. But was it the same as him sitting in a classroom every day? Absolutely not. Well, he's not going to take Algebra II until his sophomore year. So you're going to see it come up again at sophomore. This is going to be a multi-year problem. And so, we have to start thinking differently about, how are we going to intervene and support these students? Because tutoring, and seed tutoring, and things like that, that we traditionally did every year, we just don't believe is enough. We need to think about how to close those types of gaps, and that's what this is really about, is trying to help make sure that we get the outcomes for our students that they need. That's what it's about. Mr. Jarrett, did I miss anything?
No.
Okay. Good answer, Mr. Jarrett. You, your contract's in the mail.
Can I just jump in here? We're just, one quick question on that. Will there be, I guess, a list forthcoming of which campus? I know you said all Title Ones, but you know, for those of us that may not know exactly which ones those are.
For re-engagement camps?
Yes.
Yeah. So we have that. We know where re-engagements camps are, Mr. Hasso. So, Mr. Jarrett, if you would send me an email that I can forward on, just to show them what campuses those are at. And then we, they identified certain students based on learning outcomes, and then we've invited them. Now, we can't mandate that they come, we can't make them come, because it's not compulsory attendance.
Yeah.
But we can invite them to come. And, and so, we, we think we're going to get quite a bit of interest in it.
Thank you, Dr. Micah. Thank you so much for, I hope that, you know, the community that was questioning now understands that it's a necessity. And it is, I think you're correct. I think that we will be seeing the effects of COVID slide, summer slide behind it in years to come, and so hopefully, this will help close that gap. Thank you.
This is, this is unprecedented. We've never had students out of school this long. And so, nobody really knows the true impact this is going to have until they return, and then we're going to see it. And this is positioning us in a proactive way to take it on. That's what it's about. Rather than react, we want to be proactive and do it. And again, it was a small, minor adjustment to a calendar, and we think it has some big benefit to it.
Well, and I think particularly to, you know, unless we already know that we're not going to be held accountable in some way at the end of next year, which I don't think is the case. I think somehow, the state will hold us and our children accountable. And again, like you, that, you know, I've got an incoming fifth grader, and so I'm thinking, you know, good grief, being out six, six, you know, or out the last three, I guess, of school, and then going through summer, knowing she's coming into her final year of elementary school, and going to have to have a nice star exam, or maybe some equivalent, that's, if it's concerned.
Right. I, see, they waived SSI this year at fifth and eighth. We don't know if they'll do that next year. We have no idea. And that means that a student that doesn't pass reading and math doesn't move on. And those are things that we have to, we have to keep in mind, and we have to do everything within our locus of control, and that's really been the focus at principal meetings now for, before COVID started, which is really focusing within our locus of control. This was something that we could tangibly do with, with minor impacts, but with possible great gains to it. And Mr. Jarrett and his team have been working very diligently on what these 30 days, when should they fall, and what should they look like? Because we want to make the greatest impact. Many districts are simply looking at not doing these for a full calendar year. That's a long time to go on. So we're having, and Mr. Jarrett and his team are having some pretty robust conversations about when those days should fall, for, again, to close those gaps.
I guess I'll add something. I didn't speak at all. So, no, so, and Dr. Micah hit the nail on the head. Essentially, as we're continuing to analyze the challenges in front of us, taking consideration to what these kiddos have went through over the past three months during the closures, as well as during the summer slide, what we realize is that we still have a urgency to educate our kids and prepare them for the next years, or all the years ahead of them. Right now, just based on our distance learning program and face-to-face summer school, we have 1,850 students registered. So the demand is there. That means parents are recognizing it, we're recognizing it, and we couldn't sit on the sideline and watch these kids suffer. And so, as we've done the summer school program, we were able to allow every student, no matter what zip code they were in, to attend summer school this year for free because of those savings. In addition to that, the Title I schools are having access to a very high engagement. It's about re-engagement, and really re-acclimating these kiddos at title schools that really already have some deficits to re-engage back into school, so they don't face August feeling inferior to their peers. And so, that's what the re-engagement camp is, is to prepare those kids to enter school back in August. And then for all the other kids, we've offered an opportunity for an enrichment camp, because all kids matter. And so, through that, it's about Camp Invention, which is kids exploring opportunities and engaging in activities that make them curious and apply skills that they have. So our hope is that through this 180 days, is that as we move forward into the next year, we can look at Saturday programming, we can look at summer programming, because we need to fill those gaps in the most expeditious manner that we can, because we don't have forever. We have the time, wherever these kids sit today, to when they graduate from our system, and we want to make sure they're prepared to take their next steps in life. And so, these, these extra dollars will afford us the opportunity to be creative and innovative to meet their needs.
Yeah. And if you'll recall, remember, we don't even know the demographic changes that have happened until we can return, right? So we're, we're, we have to anticipate some new students coming. I mean, even TEA set up a, a, I guess, a coding system across the state for us to say, did they engage, and at what level? So that it went, because again, we're predicting that we had some moves across our district and across the state, so that you can say, well, Mr. Hasso, you weren't with us last year. I know you were in X other district, but you're coming, and I can see you didn't engage in distance learning at all. So this is probably one we're going to have to get on our radar very quickly, and you are going to get invited into some other things. And Ms. Winkley, while you came from the same district, you had a high level of engagement, so we probably, we probably, you know, may not have some of the same concerns that we have. Because again, what Mr. Jarrett and his team did is really looked, along with our campus principals, they've been instrumental in this, is helping us identify the right types of students to fall into these categories, and then again, inviting them in. Mr. Jarrett, Camp, the Invention Camp, how many had enrolled already?
I just have that in front of me, and it's right.
Roughly.
Roughly, probably about 1,000 kids are signed up right now.
Yeah. That's, that's not re-engagement. That's, that's just enrichment.
K through five? K through five, yes, ma'am.
So we've already had 1,000. Now, that one's not free.
No, that one is $75 per student, and right now, we're sitting with roughly 1,000 kids signed up.
Yeah.
I'd just also like to commend Mr. Jarrett, too, for the Revard Report. The statements that you made about our teachers, the way you lifted them up for their response to distance learning was really great to see. I think it was very important for people to recognize that these teachers have done an amazing job, and through circumstances totally beyond their control, we're facing the issues with these students and the way that we're ready to step up and address those issues. So thank you for what you said about our district and our, and our teachers and our students.
I appreciate that, and the teachers, and really, all the staff have really just embraced the idea that we're going to do whatever it takes so that all kids can learn. Do we have opportunities for improvement? Absolutely. And we're embracing those opportunities as not negative points in this, this new, new learning space that we're going to be in, but we're really seeing it as something that we can embrace and allow our teachers to thrive and our kids to be successful. So I appreciate you recognizing that, but our teachers and our CNI folks have really worked hard to do the best they could under circumstances.
Well, I think, too, Dr. Micah, as you've stated, and I can't quote exactly the way you said it, but we're in a new education system that is being created.
We reinvented education in seven days.
Yes.
That's what we did. For decades, education's model existed the same way. And Wednesday of spring break, we closed schools, and by Monday, we were already redesigning what schools look like, moving forward. Because the following Monday after spring, not the first Monday after spring break, the second one, we began distance learning. I mean, it, it is, unless you're a teacher, and truly, they're amazing, and they really demonstrated how amazing they are through COVID-19. Because can you just imagine for a minute, everything that you've known for decades has been thrown out the window, you can't do any of it anymore, and you have to reinvent your entire job in seven days? And go do it, and do it really well. That's what they had to do. That's what principals did. That's what, I mean, you all talked about graduations. Look, we had to reinvent graduation, right? And then what we hear is, gosh, you should never go back to Freeman. You know, because that's, I guess, that's some of the good that came out of this, is the possibilities that are there to really rethink the work. End on that, let's go back to budget.
All right, let's, let's talk some numbers again.
All right. Number.
Okay, so, looking, looking at the budget, we want to recap it a little bit. We've talked about most of these items in depth. So I want to start with 1920's adopted budget and its ongoing amendments. And then here are all the changes that we're, we're looking to do to 2021's budget. The only thing in here that we haven't talked in depth on is, we want to add $1 million for the CTE program expansion. You took one big step last week on that, and I don't have any specifics on what we're, we plan to do, because that's still in development. It's going to be like, revenue picture unclear, other things still in development. Those are like my key words here. So, but, but we want that set aside so that we can expand that program and work on, on those plans. We've, we've covered everything else between this week and last week, except for this big CARES Act adjustment. Now, we've been talking about CARES Act, and I got to tell you, it gives me a headache. So don't feel bad if it gives you a headache. Remember how we were talking in an earlier budget study session? Mr. Moy was explaining that TEA is not going to give us all of our foundation school program. So what they're going to do is give us CARES Act money instead. So we've been through some training, we've been talking, we've been researching, and we've been telling you all along, we're not quite sure how it's going to impact the numbers. Well, tonight, I want to show you what, what we're, what's going to happen. In 1920's revenue for the General Fund, we're going to take out $10.5 million of revenue, and we're going to go stick it over in a federal fund for the CARES Act. But the expenses that match that aren't going to come out of the General Fund until 2021. So the General Fund's going to lose 10 and a half million in revenue in 1920, and that's going to slide over to CARES. The General Fund in 2021 is going to lose 10 and a half million of expenses, and that's going to slide over to CARES. CARES will be a net zero when it's over, and so will the General Fund, but it won't be until the end of 2021. So it's going to take us two years. One year's going to move the revenue, one year's going to move the expenses. And for comparison purposes, a lot of times, we're going to show you, we're going to pretend like it didn't happen, and everything stayed in the General Fund, because that's what we spent, and we only are moving this money out into this federal fund because the state is supplanting part of the foundation school program with that federal stimulus package. I'm, I'm really happy y'all all looked really engaged on that, and I hope I didn't hurt your head too much. Okay?
And I think it's really important, though, to make sure that, that everyone knows, this is a sup-
this is a supplant and not a supplement. We've really got to work hard on getting that message out. What everyone's going to see is, hey, they're getting 10 and 1/2 million, and we're not, and we're not.
We're getting 10 and 1/2 million and losing 10 and 1/2 million.
Kind of looks and smells like another year, doesn't it?
About that, yeah.
That we remember, Mr. Moy? 2011, maybe?
The more things change, the more that, yeah.
You know, we've been down this road before.
Exactly.
Yes. Okay, so now, we're showing you that, that impact where we're going to take 10 and 1/2 million worth of expenditures in 2021 and move it to the federal fund, okay? So, ultimately, to adopt a budget for 2021 on Monday, it'll look around $564 million. That does not include a retention supplement, and that, if done, will be done in a budget amendment in September after we know more information. Okay? So, let's take a look at a different way, the same numbers, but just look at it a little different. The salary and benefits budgets are always the, by far, the largest part of our budget. We are labor-intensive, we are a people business. 86% of our budget is on salaries and benefits. About $494 million for both 1920 and 2021. Keep in mind, even though we made campus staffing changes to save some money for 2021, we're also increasing the district share of health insurance, and we also have a TRS rate increase. So, we'll end up at a similar number. And the rest of our contracted services, those are staying pretty similar. Supplies and materials, other operating costs have a big jump because I'm budgeting, budgeting for something I don't know where to put it. So, the program intent, the program allotment catch-up that we talked about last week, where we, we actually don't know if we'll have to do it, but we may have to spend extra money to make up for the spending we didn't do in 1920 for those program allotments. I just stuck them in other operating because until we get more information, we won't know the plan for, for those funds. And so, that explains that big jump there. So, and then, at the end, we're backing off that $10.5 million in CARES Act. Ultimately, that will probably come out of salaries and benefits. That would be the most federally compliant way to process it. When we move this 10 and 1/2 million over to the CARES Act, we will still have some federal things that we have to do. So, teachers might, today, they haven't said that they don't. They might have to do time and effort, just like our Title I teachers. And so, it will be the money that we're used to, but with more hoops and things that we have to do for it. So, this is one way to look at that budget. Let's take another look. On Monday, you'll be adopting a budget by function code, as required by TEA. This is a high-level look at function codes. As you can see, the biggest percentage is spent in instruction and instruction-related. Those are things that are in the classroom, or the libraries, or directly related to the classroom. And as you can see, that's by far where most of our money sits. Instruction and school leadership includes our campus administration, so our principals or, and our admin staff. Student support services are things like counseling, nurses, transportation, extracurricular. Administrative support would include things like central office, finance, resources, those kind of support departments. Non-student support includes maintenance, security services, and data processing. So, that just gives you an idea where all these funds are going. As you can see, it stays pretty consistent as a percentage of our budget. And next week, you'll adopt at a more detailed level by function. This is the summary view, and next week, we'll go through those in detail. Since TEA requires us to track costs with a 20-digit account code, we can really slice and dice our numbers in multiple ways. And one of the ways we like to do that is by looking to see how much of our costs are attributable to a campus, or how much falls out as a non-campus cost. So, 81.9% of our budget, $470 million out of the $574, could be directly attributed to a campus. Other costs in non-campus would include like the finance department, transportation, and maintenance. We have some staff, like speech pathologists, who will go from campus to campus, but they're housed here in central office, but they spend their day visiting campuses and working with students. But we'll consider them non-campus because we cannot allocate them directly to a particular campus. So, as you can see, again, the bulk of this budget, just like on the other slides, the bulk of the budget's in instruction, and the bulk of the budget's out there at the campus level. But we can drill in these numbers a little bit more. So, if we look at the detail of the $470 million sitting at the campuses, over 90% of this is for salaries and benefits. By far, as we've said before, we are a labor business, people business. Other costs include substitutes. Services will include many things. It'll even include billings from our internal departments, like telecom and copier services, and even police services. Utilities at the campuses are allocated around $14.9 million, which is our second biggest cost item after salaries and benefits. And there's supplies and travel and other things, giving you a total of $470 million for the campus budgets. If we drill down into the salary component of the campus budgets, you'll see, not surprising, that teachers and aides make up the most of this cost. I won't read you every one of those numbers, but as you can see, it falls in line with a lot of what those function costs we're, we were talking about. The classroom, the teacher aides, and the librarians will end up in that instruction and instruction-related group. And that was 66% of our budget, and you can see why such a large number exists there. Now, let's take a look at the non-campus, the $104 million that was left over. Only 60% of the non-campus budget is spent on salaries and benefits. There's a lot more in services and supplies. So, we're buying a lot of parts, we're buying a lot of things to fix buses, and we're buying a lot of things to fix toilets and lights and all those great things that are necessary for students to have a facility to learn in. When you break down the salaries, 53% are for professionals, 10% for paraprofessionals, and 36% for auxiliary support staff. If we look at this same number by a department, you can see that of the $100 million, over 30 million is spent in transportation and maintenance. So, we don't, we can't allocate all the costs for transportation on a campus-by-campus basis, but those campuses can't survive without that service. Same thing with maintenance. So, we're just trying to give you different ways to look at the numbers, to give you a feel for where the money's going. Now that you've seen a lot of detail, let's go back to a high level and look at our fund balance summary, okay? Starting here, in the first column, we have the 1920 adopted budget. But we're going to be drastically changing that with a budget amendment next week. We're going to take $10 million out of revenue for the CARES Act, as we were just talking. So, that $10.5 million is going to come out of our revenue number and move over to the federal fund. So, last week, we'd been showing you a positive number of about $5 million for the 1920 forecasted results for the net change. Because we're going to remove that 10 and 1/2 million dollars for the, for the revenue to send it over to the CARES Act, we're now flipped, and now, it's a negative 5 million. But never fear, the 10 and 1/2 million dollars in expenditures are not included in 2021. And so, when we get to the end of 2021, we'll get to the same calculated fund balances we would have had that whole supplant CARES thing, CARES Act thing not happened. So, a couple of disclaimers. 1920's forecast is not easy. It's just been a unique year. Just today, I realized some cost, we have some costs that may come in before June 30th that we were expecting in July 1, so this number's going to change as those things happen. Shipping is all over the map. So, some, some things that we ordered are coming in quickly. Some things are taking a lot longer. It just depends on what those businesses, how they were operating during the closure and everything. So, again, this number may change, but it'll flow through to the next year, those kinds of things. I'm just giving you that disclaimer so that when you see the actual results in November, you won't think I was off in the weeds or something. So, 2021, importantly, does not include the fifth penny or a retention at this time. So, again, if those things are taken care of in September, we'll do that through a budget amendment. And as I always like to remind you, and you can look through 2021's budget column versus the forecasted results column, that's a big differential because that budget includes being staffed at 100% the whole year, and everybody spending every dollar they could possibly spend. But our forecasted results are based off of our history of spending, our history of staffing, and netting the savings of those kinds of things, so. Ultimately, we'll end at 2.9, our estimate is 2.9 months of fund balance. And that's it for the general fund, unless you have any questions. Okay, all right. Let's talk about school nutrition. Oh, as you can imagine, school nutrition had a wild ride. So, the forecast for the revenue for 1920 is significantly lower than what we'll budget for 2021. Once the closure happened, prior to the closure, we participated in the National School Lunch Program. So, that program is where we get federal reimbursement for meals, and that program is recorded in the School Nutrition Services Fund that you adopt. When we closed, we were no longer participating in the National School Lunch Program. We switched to the Summer Feeding Program during the closure because that was how you could continue to get reimbursed. Summer Feeding Program is in a separate federal fund than the School Nutrition Services Fund. So, most of the revenue and most of the costs during the closure are sitting in that grant fund instead of this fund. So, that's why their revenue in 1920 looks so low. And 2021 is for a regular year, knock on wood. So, it was 126 days of service for 1920, and we're doing 180 in our budget for next year. One little disclaimer in all this, once we added in the SNAP to our distribution during closure, the SNAP piece stays in the School Nutrition Services Fund. So, there's a little bit there, but not nearly as much as went over to the Summer Feeding Program. All right, so other changes for revenue. Next year, we're expecting an increase in federal reimbursement rates. Federal regulation requires us to increase meal prices at certain times, depending on where those federal reimbursement rates are. So, we're anticipating an increase in the price for adult meals. Again, we have fewer days, and even though it doesn't necessarily increase revenue always, we do plan to add five additional community eligibility provision sites. They're listed here. That means those students will eat for free, all of them on the campus, and our reimbursement will be based off of our direct certification for, for, through programs like SNAP and TANF. It changes the, the formula for the, the funding. All right. So, here's our meal prices. Again, this is an estimate because not all the pieces are known at this point in time, but our best guess right now is that we would have to take meals for, adult meals for lunch from 3:85 to 4:00, and breakfast from 2:25 to 2:30. Not a big increase, and we don't have a choice. And $4 is still a great bargain. On the expenditures side, we see a very similar thing. We had 126 days of service, so the costs were only $28.2 million for 1920. Our budget for next year would be $36 million. That includes the increase in the district's contribution to health insurance and three extra days, you know, compared to normal. But that, that drives the, the increase in the costs for their expenditures. When we put it all together, you have to say this fund and the staff here were really well-prepared to handle a crisis. The 1920 budget was actually adopted expecting a loss. So, the feds don't let you grow a fund balance over three months. They, they don't like you, you know, piling up their money. So, once you reach three months, you have to file a plan with the Texas Department of Agriculture to spend it down. And so, we were actually in that mode for 1920 of spending it down. And we were actually budgeted to lose more than what we're forecasting now. So, the closure didn't make it worse, it made it a little bit better. And so, for next year, budgeting a loss of $800,000 actually puts us in a pretty good spot. It would put us at 2.7 months, and since we can't be over three, it would make us compliant in that, and it's still pretty close to three. So, it's, it's sitting in a good position in case we need to be flexible for other future issues. Do you have any questions?
I had one question, I think, a couple slides back. There was, one of the line items says capital outlay.
Yes.
And it went from 7.9% to 1.9%. What, what was the reason?
That was part of our plan to spend down their fund balance in 1920.
Oh, okay, okay.
Because we were trying to get that down below three months, and so-
Gotcha.
We did accomplish a great deal of it, so, yay.
Thank you.
I do have a question.
Yes.
It's related to school nutrition, but more on the, on the campuses. So, we had quite a few high schools and community members that donated and to go toward the unpaid balances at the campuses. And I just wanted to see, wanted to know what that looked like because it was all kind of happening in the spring, and then, we shut down. And was there a significant reduction in that, in those balances that were at some of those campuses? And I think Eisenhower was one of the recipients of the, of that gift.
Sharon, do you? I, I actually don't have that answer on me.
I've been waiting to ask this question since we closed because I think it was such a wonderful idea.
So, the answer is that it, it made a huge difference in that, that moment for that campus. The problem is that as soon as you pay down the negative balances to zero, the next day, the negative balances start coming back up. And so, it was an amazing gesture of kindness for those Churchill students to pay off those balances, not only at Churchill, but also at Eisenhower. But then, the balances just started coming back up the following day because those students could then charge again, and again, and again. So, what we're really excited about is now at Eisenhower, they'll be able to have all the students eat for free, and so, we won't have any of those negative balances at that campus where we actually have almost half of the students enrolled on some sort of federal aid program, or homeless or foster children. So, there's a huge need at that campus, and so, we'll be able to meet that need in a more sustainable way versus just putting a Band-Aid on it.
All right. Next steps, so, Monday, June 22nd. I sure hope you all plan to be available, or at least a quorum of you plan to be available because we will need to adopt the 2021 budget at the public hearing. Well, that night, we'll also approve a compensation plan that allows for the contingency to look at things in September, approve a final budget amendment for 1920, and fund balance commitments for year-end. And then, in September, you'll do the tax rate adoption. And depending on the fifth penny in our financial outlook, then you may also have the budget amendment for the compensation at that time, too. And that's all I have for you tonight, unless you have other questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Suzie, or Brian, or Dan?
Brian hasn't spoken tonight, if you have a question.
Hi, Brian.
No, nobody has any questions? Okay, great job, great presentation. Thank you. Okay, great job, great presentation, thank you. Y'all have spent a lot of time and handled a very interesting way to do with all these unknowns, so thank you for your time. And at that, item six adjournment, and the time is seven thirty-one. Have a great evening, everyone.